We'll convene our meeting, City Council. Six thirty-seven. Roll call, John Rollins?
Here.
John Collins?
Here.
Misty Connell?
Here.
Bill Sargent?
Here.
Neil Lowery?
Here.
Jeff Apted?
Here.
Mike Nelson?
Here.
Kira Heimgast?
Here.
All right, our city attorney, Tom Kicklack. Our city clerk, Marcia Henneman is absent this evening. Christie's taking minutes. And I'm Mayor Rosette. The adoption of the agenda. Council, I sent you two items. If you've got those. We're looking at new business. Item three will be budget adjustment request. And by the resolution that goes along with that. Number four under that will be purchase, a discussion for purchase of a new vehicle. An approval to go forward on state bid. And then I'd like to add one more. So item number five under new business is a request to continue with a maintenance agreement with a contractor on the city administration building. Talk a little bit about that and ask for some more information. So I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add those three items to new business. Hey, Misty?
Second.
Second. Kira? Okay, Kira. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Close my left side. Approval of our minutes? For the May, City Council. And I'll entertain a motion to add.
Make a motion that we approve the May's meeting. It's now.
Make a motion, Misty?
Second.
Kira, second. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Close my left side. We have a public forum at this time. Before I speak to that though, we have a young man with us, Brady Drain. He's sitting in the back back here. I might ask him to stand so we can all see him a little better. He's working on his citizenship ad. And so he's here observing the city council meeting, taking copious notes, and will report to his group sometime in the near future. So welcome. We're glad you're here. Thank you. All right, our public forum. It's two minutes per speaker. All remarks will be addressed to the City Council. Council, the mayor may ask questions of the speaker or respond to questions or comments. No official action will be taken tonight on anything in a public forum. Is there anybody that would like to address the council? We'll go on to business reports. John, Rodley Library?
Hello. Two items I wanted to bring to your attention tonight. Number one is that the library is looking to become a passport acceptance center as a, well, partly to be as a service to the area and also as a revenue source. Looks like just from the initial review that we meet all the qualifications to be able to, basically involves receiving new passport applications, processing them into the mountain to the National Passport Agency. And then obviously issues the passport. So a lot of libraries have been getting into this because, as I mentioned before, because first of all, as a public building and as a nonprofit, they qualify. And it wouldn't be too hard, doesn't look like, to train one person, probably me, to perform this service either by appointment or whenever the library is open. So we're looking into that. It could be a great revenue source. The standard processing fee is $25 that we receive for each application. And there's also this service aspect. Right now, if you want to apply for a passport, you have to drive to Fayetteville or possibly Farmington Post Offices. We'd be the only place in southern Washington County where you could go to apply for a passport. And we are, I don't know if, how widespread the knowledge is, that the state libraries were cut, budget was cut in the last legislated session by a million dollars, $1 million across the board. So that's going to cut our funding by about $6,500 for 2016. So we are, you know, trying to be creative and looking for new revenue sources, and this is one. But, you know, just through some research, a lot of libraries are doing. The other thing that appeals to me is that it would bring in people to the library that don't necessarily normally go and visit the library. So hopefully we will meet some new people and they'll make a good impression on them so that they won't want to come back. So it looks like a win-win. Just will involve a commitment on our part, but I think we can do it. And second item is that we will have a part-time position opening very soon. Maria Pendergraff is leaving us. We kind of knew this was coming for a while. She's been wanting to move to Little Rock to be closer to her daughter. And she's put her house on the market and already received an offer. So she promised me one month to train me and whoever else comes that we can find to do her job. But anyway, she's, it's going to be a big loss. She was the head librarian at Prairie Grove for, I think, about 25 years, helping the children's library in Prairie Grove. And has, you know, kind of wisdom that you can't find anywhere through experience. So it's going to be a loss, but we kind of knew it was coming. And anyway, we certainly want to recognize her service to the library. Joan Bachman talked her out of retirement a few years ago, and she's made a huge contribution, even though she's a little bit behind the scenes, who has public figures as Joan or myself in the library. The job will be about, she apparently works about 15 hours a week. So we'll be looking for somebody. We want to advertise that position. So starting now, hopefully the distribution of the minutes and people here, you'll know that there is a position opening at the library, a part-time position. I think that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
John, will you make sure Marcia has that information about that position? Just email her and she can get that on the city website as well.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, I need to write the job description. Hopefully by tomorrow, we'll have it done at the end of the day. And then we'll get that. And then we'll be accepting applications for the position once we get the description written up. So thank you.
I know. You want to talk about the summer reading program?
Oh, okay. Right. Let's, starting next Monday and for the next six weeks in West Fork, we'll have regular sort of reading program for younger kids. We have one program for kids in grades five and up. But if you know of anyone, or if you're responsible for any kids at preschool up to grades, grade four, I guess something about age four on up would be appropriate. We have a great summer reading program planned. Our children's librarian will be presenting programs and we'll have books available around the theme. The theme this year is every hero has a story, so it's about the theme of heroes. And so we'll have a lot, you know, books and things supporting that idea, that theme. And it's going to be quite good. I need to, I sent out a flyer to the friends. I need to, if there's some way to get that on the city website, I don't know.
Yes.
We'll get it on our library website, I guess.
If you go through Marcia on that again, should you get that posted on the city website?
Right. We hope, okay, good. It's well attended. And there is one special program where we'll have sort of a guy, DiNardo, with guitar heroes. You'd expect, he's a special performer, he's a performer, draws, big crowds usually. So we'll really be promoting his performance in July. I can't remember the exact date though. It's every Monday at one o'clock, starting this Monday, this upcoming Monday, for six weeks. Some of them may be in library halls, some in the library. I think this first week, we'll see what the attendance is. If it gets a little too large for the library, we'll move over to the hall.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, John. Paul Etta, do you have anything for us?
Just my written report, John.
All right. Any questions for Paul Etta? Secretary's not here. No report? Police Department, we'll go ahead and mention a couple of things. He's got this made report here in our packet. One thing, Chief Watts has completed his required 40-hour refresher course, so he's now a police officer in Arkansas. So he went to a training academy for that. Then we do have our part-time officer, Adam Brown, is now a full-time officer for our police department. And his start time, his start date is June 16th. So that's on there. And then just briefly, Chief Watts has put together, has been in the process of putting together a weapons training facility, which is out in the winter. He already has a couple of dates out to kind of fall for pistol and rifle training. And is bringing in some people from out of state to do that training, who have both police and military expertise in that. And so I think, I think we're going to see more things going on out there. We don't have that contract signed, but that's in place. And maybe discussing this later when we're not. We'll have that to look forward to in the future. I'm going to go ahead and cover this now. This will be whole business on number one. We offered, we went through our process for securing somebody for that position. We did our interviews last week and this week. And the committee, myself, and the committee included Christie, you asked, we asked, decided on one person. We asked James Scanlon that he would accept the position. And he's going to, so we gave him a letter of acceptance. And he has signed that today. So we don't have a specific start date on that. He's, he's the officer of the chief and see how much time they need to have him continue on the police force. And we'll have a start date. So is there, is there any questions or comments from council on that new position? I would like a motion to accept this by the council. It has been done by the modern sewer committee in the starting process. Misty?
Second.
Second by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Close my left side.
What did you decide to salary?
Fifty-eight thousand. Before we continue with that, with the recommendation of the committee, I make the appointment for James Scanlon to be Public Works Director for the city.
I was just going to say, I think it's a little high for a man with no experience in that field and $4,000 more than a police chief's target department head. I just, I'll voice my opinion on that.
Okay. Do you want me to respond to that?
That's up to you.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we had three people who we thought were going to be qualified for that position. We interviewed all three of them. James Scanlon has a bachelor's degree. He is working on his masters. He's had a lot of experience in industry, some of that working with wastewater, the chemical side of it. But he's had those experiences in the industry. He has overseen departments which have multiple employees in those, 20, 30 employees, and has taken care of the management of those jobs and with those companies. He has worked with ADEQ. He's worked with EPA and other government agencies. So he has a working relationship with both state and federal environmental agencies. And he has voiced a strong desire to be a continuing part of this community. He thought that he could better serve West Fork in a capacity that was much more challenging than being a patrol officer. And I think that, you know, that spoke about his intentions of wanting to stay here and want to contribute to this city. With that and with the professional nature that he presented himself, our committee felt very strongly that he was the most qualified of applicants that we had.
We established a maximum, yeah, a maximum pay for that position. You know, we didn't do that the last time and we wound up with problems. Lots of expense. I'd like to see some kind of a cap put on what that, what that position pays.
We are, we are discussing that right now for not only that position, but for all the positions in West Fork. I can't tell you that we're going to have that in place this year. We're going to move in that direction. We'll have, we'll bring all of the department heads together within the next couple of weeks and ask them to start considering those cap possibilities for their departments and how they would like to deal with it. And then in the budget process, it's really going to start about in August. And we'll discuss that more seriously and see if we can find a solution to that. I don't think we're going to have everything in place that we might want to with just this first attempt. This is probably going to have to be changed over the next couple of years as we gain some momentum in it and also get some experience in it. But we're kind of looking at other communities and what they're doing with this to get some ideas. But we are, we're looking at caps and ways to give promotion and to give raises for everybody across the board, not only department heads, but our people who work within the departments.
I hope that council has some say in that.
Yeah, we will.
The money situation.
Yeah. In fact, this, you'll be asked to come to the first meeting with the department heads and then, you know, any after that that we have. So, yeah, the council will be involved in that.
I'm a little concerned that that may be kind of after the fact when you start somebody I think that's kind of high, especially since we just hired a police chief with several years of experience and we hired him at 55. And, you know, we don't get the grip on this, whether it's from the bottom side or the top side, we're going to be right back where we were, if not worse.
Well, that, that position was advertised at 55 to 65 thousand. So right now, that top end, according to what we advertised, was 65. And the discussions that we had coming up to that, we have a couple of people on the committee who have experience in this area. And have been around municipalities, water and sewer streets for a lot of years. And they had even voiced higher salaries than that. So that final decision was mine, and I brought it down to 55, 65, to be originally started higher than that. This position is probably the widest span of responsibility in the city. We have water and sewer, we have a budget going on. We've got a lot of infrastructure to deal with. We have streets. We're looking at building maintenance, you know, all the way down. Even right now, a dog catcher falls into that position. But it's, it's a lot of responsibility. It's going to be dealing a lot with bids, with the lethal aspects, everything that that department comes under because of both state and federal regulations. So the responsibilities, that position probably has more responsibilities in it than any other position in our town. We wanted to get good applicants and we did. And I think if we would have gone much lower than that, we would not. If we look out to other communities, many and most of those salaries are higher than
I don't question any of that. The only problem that I have is, I've been thinking about this for some time, but the position seems to be getting less complicated than it was because we are not going to have to test any water coming in. That's set by Fayetteville's standard. And all the water going out in the suburbs, in the sewer system, as we had, will take care of. They'll be testing, we won't be testing. So I see a big relief there that we're not going to have to.
Our infrastructure on the sewer needs a lot of work. It's not just the sewer plant.
Oh, I'm not talking, I'm, but, okay.
Well, am I misunderstanding that we also gave Christie a raise because Christie has taken on some of the stuff that Watts did? And then that takes away some of the responsibilities of the new director?
Well, Christie has taken on more of the responsibilities, I think, of some of the daily activities. Or that a necessity to be, we voiced that. But she's, she's now putting, and she is, she's now putting together some recourse. So we'll go back to that position.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I'm not questioning what Christie does. I'm just questioning whether or not that's taking some of the stuff off of what that new director is going to be doing.
Well, I don't, there may be some things that are taking away from him a little, but not a lot. And I think that we're adding, we're also adding to that position. Because now that position is going to require that person to look for additional resources of money and funding for other things that we need to do in West Fork. We're running our budget pretty much at max every year. And there are compromises made every year on our budget negotiations on the components. So we're kind of at a break here. And, and we have departments that are underfunded. Police Department is underfunded, our department is underfunded. And I think we can look at others as well. Our library is now going to be underfunded. So, so trying to find other resources of funds through grants or agencies is going to be part of that. And that in itself is a fairly big job. And certainly, if those, if it's successful, those could certainly justify some additional salary for that position. Chad didn't mention anything in particular on his report. Oh, yes. Robert, can you give us a little bit of an update on where we are on our sewer line? Any decisions are coming up?
We have two ongoing activities that Tim Flinger is still working with the cultural resources survey. Basically evaluating locations that they identified on the first, first phase. Some of those were on the Fayetteville Airport property. He's made contact with the new airport manager there. Probably came as a surprise to him that this was ongoing. I don't know if the transition, he's only been there six, eight months. If he was advised of this, but, but they've made contact with those folks and they've got access to the airport property. We're sending the airport manager the current plans for sewer main across that property, around behind the green and filled entrance. So there's quite a bit of pipe that poses on their property. There's a few sites that they found historical and artifacts that they need to evaluate further. So that's, that's ongoing. And then we've got three segments of sewer main that they were on the table at the TV with their big camera. They came back with a small camera right during all the rains and everything was full. So we're asking them to come back again now that the closure's in. The city guys went out and checked the closure and that we can run the small camera sheet, you know, that information together so that when we move forward with the sewer system repairs, we'll have the full set of information as opposed to having pre-settlements and still other solvers. Hopefully that'll get done in the next few weeks if we can have the full picture. That's basically the two activities that are ongoing right now.
We can. Okay. On whole business, item two, ANRC, it's on the Extra Resource Commission to release money for rehab work, beginning our wastewater infrastructure, including manholes rehab, pipe repair and replacement. That has, they have pushed that up a little bit for us. And they, what happened there to allow them? What decision did they make on that?
Earl kind of twisted the arm a little bit, I think. Mayor was part of the situation there. They recognized a need for the sewer repairs to be done. When we met with them in Little Rock, the mayor went down and expressed the concern that the sewer repairs be done. So it's been multi-faceted. Everybody's been feeding on them to let us move ahead with that. They've done some soul searching and we've finally caught all of them in office long enough to make a decision to allow us to move forward on that. So basically, they're going to let us go ahead on sewer repairs as a separate funding package that can move forward and not wait on the cultural resources survey to be completed and environmental evaluation. That follows that and the public hearings follow that to ongoing EPA criteria that sends concern years to years. We're hoping to move forward with that and get something done. Not in town to beat those floods we've been having, but maybe before the next major round comes and hopefully on.
All right. And then, on our item number three, the engineering agreement and procurement requirements, this has been requested by A and R C. And essentially, what it, what it is, is that we are, McCallan Engineering is going to be our, our engineer director and seeing us through the rest of the project. So, you have resolution, it's in front of you, and Christie, that number is going to be seven?
Twenty oh seven.
Okay. So, that number's going to be oh seven. And it's a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with McCallan Engineering for the consulting services for the sewer pipeline project related to sewer infrastructure and more. And I don't think this is really the, the main way that, that they've done this over the years, but Tom, can you speak to why we're doing this?
Since they wrote the email saying they want us to make sure we adhere to this state law, which of course we do anyway, I know the mayor's evaluated your, you know, qualifications, and of course, you're well-known to the city and this council, and the mayor, of course, evaluated other qualifications from other companies, and we went ahead and made sure we fulfilled all of the state law. And I went ahead and reduced them to writing, so that the NRC can see that the council was advised and how we hit all those high points in that state law. We don't typically do a resolution, but that way they'll see that instead of just trusting the mayor or a public works person to go through the current process, the council's going to recognize that, so.
Historically, we had a contract with the commission that may or may not have been done under what they foresee as a procurement requirement, so we're going slate, start over, take care.
Took that very seriously, and making five of those procurement, that procurement statement. So, that way, you'll have a resolution. When it comes time to do a contract again, they'll have a policy.
I know you just got this in front of you, have you, have you all had time just to read through it? Is there any questions on this resolution?
I make a motion that we pass resolution twenty fifteen dash oh seven.
Christie, is there a second? Don, second? Any discussion?
I, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Have we identified any major problem areas?
We have multiple manholes that are problem areas, and then in some of the TV work, there were some specific leaks that have been identified, and some of them, you know, it always happens in a possible place somewhere, every seventy-one. One of the stretches that they get TVs under the railroad crap crossing, which could be equally the worst possible place, but with the vibration there is probably, you know, possible, we could get pipes over this or that. There has been areas identified, the mayor's got a book about this thing, that's got tables and tables of information in it.
The, the largest percentage of infiltration, they said, were manholes. I think we're looking right around eighty percent, if my memory serves, but the cost of fixing those was going to be about forty-five percent of the total costs we're going to have. Does that sound all right from a budget perspective?
Something, you know, ranges, the majority of the repair work is manholes, the amount of water you get rid of versus the cost, it's a lot more cost than you fix those than it is to dig up and replace sewer mains. So, unless there's specific major issues with sewer mains, the cost prohibits making minor repairs to the.
Anyone else? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
As soon as my lights go. Thank you, Robert. It is, you know, sending rainwater is going to cost us the same amount of treatment as sending sewage, so reducing that is, is significant for us. Renewable Resource Center, the only thing I might mention on that is the Waste Management has opened up their grant application for this year, and what we'll be looking at West Fork to ask for that is if you get down there, Falls Place, the large building down there needs a concrete slab, so we've got costs on it, put an apron out front. We're looking at a little more electrical work done in that building, because it's just the very basics, the lights in there, and that's it. And so, and then, I've asked Andy if there are some other things that they can think that we might add into that grant, we'll put those as well on that grant. We've got about, we've got about the money to put it together, so we've got plenty of time to do that. Fire Department?
I have been real satisfied with the two guys that we've hired. They both do us a good job. Travis is good to do the training, and Mark is real good, having owned a mine and some stuff. Travis has trained our firemen better than we've ever had firemen trained. And we have good accept, access to fail things, since we have their head man in their training is on our fire form, which kind of helps. But anyway, he's built a demonstration in the old fire station there at the airport that's a forceful entry thing, and our guys have really taken to that. It's, it's good, and that's something we really need. But the main thing I need is we're hurting on the turnout gear. And we started out to get the grant, that failed, the city would have had to put up fifteen thousand on that in the rural. And the rural says that they'll go ahead and leave their fifteen in, and if the city would do that, that would let us get ten or twelve sets of turnout gear. And we are really hurting on turnout gear. And with that many, we could probably pick out the ones that are most likely to go in a place where they need the best gear. But our gear is real old. And to start with, the old gear has been washed so much, I'm not sure how perfectly it is. And the stuff is between twenty-five hundred and three thousand dollars a suit, so that would let us get ten or twelve suits if both departments would leave fifteen in, and the rural will have to, have to use some of their CD money to do that, and I think we need to do it. And I'd like the city to do that also.
Mitch, let me visit just, just a second. We, some of the discussions that we, or one of the discussions we had on that is the fire department does have reserve money.
That what?
The fire department does have reserve money, both in savings and in CDs.
Yeah.
And so, my, my request was on that, if the fire department could pay that fifteen thousand of their work for this turnout gear out of one of those two funds, either out of the CD or out of the reserve money, the savings money, to the fire department.
That's what the rurals will have to do, so that's right. We can do that. But somehow, we're going to need to go ahead and buy longer in the future, of course, you know. But now, we've done thirty-seven or eight big ones, and the training now is a lot more, makes them a lot more aggressive, like the house fire and stuff like that. And of course, our, our big deal is the highways, and neither one of them is that way. Some of the things that happen on the highway, and, and as long as we don't have one like they had, where was that, up north somewhere, they wrecked a truck, and they had twenty-two hundred picks on it. We just don't have one like that. We've had some about that bad time, too. But anyway, whatever you give for me on that, I should appreciate that. Really leery of the guys giving turnout gear, it's not first for me to share.
Christie, do we need a budget adjustment of the fire department for that fifteen thousand?
They have, between their uniform budget and their equipment budget right now, they have right at thirteen thousand. So, we can spend that and get the remaining, that, the savings that they have is only a little over four thousand dollars, so we could basically transfer that savings into the general fund and then apply that to their budget, to give them a little leeway as far as if they need anything else for the rest of the year. So, that's one way we can do it, or we can make a motion just to cash in more of their CDs and add that into their budget. Let me look and see what this is, how much the CDs are, I don't even remember.
The interest rate on the CDs is almost nothing.
It's just about not there anymore.
Yeah.
I just, I don't have a, I don't have in front of me how much each one, because they have a hundred and four thousand dollars in CDs, but off the top of my head, I don't know how much those are individually, I have in front of me.
Do we need council action to do the four thousand savings over into the, and then the rest will be covered because of the categories they're in? Mitch, is, is that all right if we do it that way, if we, if we pull the four thousand back into, the four thousand savings back into budget?
No, I'm not completely hearing anything.
Okay, you've got, you've got thirteen thousand dollars in two accounts that are okay, we can cover that under equipment.
That's in my this year's budget.
Yes. And then, so, we're looking at two thousand more dollars, can we pull that out of the savings account rather than cashing in the CD? Is that all right with you?
The only, the problem that I have when we use the money out of what I have in my budget, it's a bare minimum for what we need in there, not including turnout gear. I think we have just a little bit of turnout gear in there, it's all, and I don't want to buy turnout gear and then have something happen that we need money around the end of the year, and have to wait on council meeting to get money to do something like
that. Well, under, under emergency condition, we can spend money that is not approved. Didn't we do this before? And then, at the next council meeting, amend the budget to handle that. So, we can, we can visit that, we can visit that anytime, so if that happens, Mitch, we can come back and approve any monies that you would have to spend under emergency condition.
Okay, but now, right now, you're talking about using the money that's in the budget right now, our normal operating money?
Yes.
Plus, plus the four thousand's in your savings.
I guess.
So, do you just want to, you want us to cash a CD in?
I want you to cash a CD, and that's use fifteen thousand of it.
Okay.
You're in good shape on the CDs, and the city needs to invest in some of this equipment more than they have been in the past, because the rural wants a lot more of the equipment than the city does, because the city's always been not wanting to do something like that. And, well, like the turnout gear we have right now, I think ninety percent of it is the rural, because the city didn't want to take this.
Or the old whip.
Air tanks and everything like that, and a lot of that stuff, if you have no air tanks, they're changing, you have to buy new ones every so often. And the parts they have, a bunch of junk carts on them that we don't even need, but you, that's the way you have to buy them, and that's the first thing you tear us up to fix. Some of our newer ones right now are in more shape than some that are old. So, I don't know.
All right.
Figure out what you can, Lee.
Cash in the CD, you need council approval for that and put it in the budget item. All right, and that would come under equipment.
But can we look at the pros and cons of that? Because I kind of like the, the first idea, it'll look better, and I don't like to just start cashing the CDs, and unless he can show a lot of, otherwise, what he was going to use that money for, I mean, we're already six months into a year.
Yes, and so, and we've got six months left. He's at, well, you know, he's asking to keep that in case there are expenses that come up between now and.
Then we can cash the CD in. Then we can cash that CD in. Is how you look at it, I think.
You're going to be penalized if you cash it in if it's not insured.
They usually made that for us, that we don't have a year to see that, a little part of it.
I don't see the difference, if he needs the money at some point, he's going to get it out of one or the other, but I think it should just take, do what you need to do, the easiest way. You don't have to use the CDs, you're going to be better off, because you'll still have them. If you need them, they're there to cash in.
How long since we cashed one in?
I'll, I'll entertain a motion to move the four thousand.
I don't think that I've paid anything cashing in a CD or using up part of it and leaving part of it in there.
I'll entertain a motion to cash, to, to move the four thousand dollars out of savings into budget.
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Say.
Okay. Any, any more discussion on that? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
All right, pose the like sign. Mitch, we're going to move four thousand out of savings into the budget, into equipment, and then if we need additional money the rest of the year, we can go back to the CD and cash it at that time, put that back in the budget. Okay, Christine, what do we have on?
I don't have any answer. Is there any questions?
All right, are there any questions on finance? Anyone? Okay. Old business, we're down to item four. Council meeting recordings, how long do we want to keep council recordings? Just a U F Y I with a council. It came into question that the council or the city was going to destroy all of its past records, and so Christie has had the pleasure of spending several hours baking copies of all of the minutes that were recorded of all of the past years for FOIA requests. That was never going to happen. We were never going to go in and destroy past records. Just wasn't going to happen. But we always honor FOIA requests, so. That said, you all want to put a limit on the time that we keep recordings from city council minutes. Right now, our city clerk uses those to help with accurate records on the minutes, so I think that's important, for the city clerk to have access to that. And if past that, I don't know what other official use that that may require. Tom, you've spoken at this a couple of times, you want to, you want to make any remarks on the recordings and keeping those?
Yes, sir, I think that it's good to know what you're going to do instead of just do whatever we've always done. I think you need to make a decision. There is no law that requires you to keep recordings or videotape or anything like that. There's a law regarding minutes, of course. What a lot of cities do, you know, what is very easy to do is record the council meetings so that the person doing the minutes will have some assistance in doing that, and after the minutes are approved, the next meeting, they can, what I would say in the old days, flip the tape over and just use another side, then flip it back over, flip it back over, so there's really no maintenance of that recording. It's not ever kept as a record. But these days, you can just probably delete the file, you know, after you've gotten the minutes approved. And that way, you're not worried about approving. If you want to keep them, then decide how long you want to keep them, and. If you wanna keep them, then decide how long you wanna keep them and sort of what format you want to keep them. Can't, what you can do is just, after the minutes are approved, you don't have to keep that recording. In fact, ask your recorder not to. But if you wanna keep them, that's fine too. There is no, as far as liability and lawsuits and such. Boy, if you looked really good, you wish you had them. And if you didn't look good, you really hope you don't have them. So that's what matters. It's just something to get all of them. I think that letting the public know what you have, how long you're gonna keep it, is the best idea.
Do you have any input as to what's kinda typical of what's part of it?
Well, I wish I could say that it's typical, that everybody has a really straightforward policy. But in fact, it's more typical, when I go to the city for a project, you find it's all over the map. You know, it's whoever's doing it at that point and what they do, what the current reporter's doing. What I recommend is again, just using that recording to aid in producing the minutes. That's what, the state law requires minutes, that's what you need to keep. Keep those minutes. So I use that recording to aid in producing the minutes, make sure the council's a chance to review the minutes. So if they're approved, the next meeting, and then you don't need to keep that recording anymore. Ask your treasurer not to keep it beyond that. To your coordinator.
Counsel?
That sounds good.
You got it, Tom? Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes, I say yes.
Pose my like sign. Motion carries. About new business? The Little Opry has changed hands. It has been sold to the Opry Nonprofit Group. And they had a pretty large benefactor to help support that. And I was contacted about two weeks ago to ask that the city council, nothing specific, but that we as a city help support the Little Opry. The discussion was that, you know, it's great family entertainment. They're here every week, never miss a beat. And that, you know, the building is right here downtown. It is a showplace for people that come in from not only our community, but surrounding communities, Oklahoma and Missouri, so. And they usually have a pretty good crowd at night. So uh, you know, I, I think that's a good idea. I think it, it really does look like a, a local entertainment place. I don't know what their plans are as far as expanding that at all. Last year, we used it at West Fest for a beauty contest. So it served, served us well there.
But there's no specific thing that they've mentioned that they'd like for us to do?
No.
What we're being obligated to?
No, they're not asking for any kind of obligation, they're just, you know, just saying, you know, this is a good thing for West Fork. I think if, if we would recognize that and then as opportunity arises, help with promotion of that. You know, we have more things going on our website, we can certainly add that to businesses and other activities that go on the website. I mean, that's a decent thing to do. You know, occasionally, I put a lot of things on the marquee. We can certainly, you know, when there's an empty side or both sides are empty, we can certainly put a message up there. Those are small things that we could begin there, then if other opportunities come up or they approach us again. I think the idea tonight is, you know, y'all think this is a good idea? I think you would support, you know, we're not offering anything financial for this promotion. It's just, it's just kinda not so fun. Anybody got any thoughts on that?
That was my thing, financial. I know the timing is not very good.
No, no, we're not, we're not gonna do that. And I don't know that we, we can, you know, we can't.
That was my concern, because we have a library that's in desperate need that would come waiting for that for me personally.
We really can't. I don't think legally we can put anybody into doing any kind of promotion.
But as far as utilizing the city website and.
Charlie, could I mention something on them?
Yes, sir.
If they start out to use the upstairs, that would be a bucket of worms. The fire, fire escape that's built on the other side over there is wood. And I'd be afraid for a dog to go up that now. It should be taken down, and then that leaves just this stairway on the back, and that won't lead to any kind of fire expansion.
Okay.
That thing needs to be metal instead of wood, but it worked right at that time, and they didn't use it any harder. But I think the upstairs of that thing is full of junk, so it is a fire hazard.
Okay. Well, hopefully if they choose to do any expansion there, we'll at least know about it so we can, we can address it then. All right, well, I'll just, if, if the opportunity comes up for us to do some things without cost, then I'll just do that. All right, one and a half cent sales tax. This is the introduction of this, totally for consideration by the city council. And we've got budget coming up soon, so we're gonna have some of this kinda weigh into some decisions that we need. Just to begin with, if, if we would pursue a sales tax of any kind right now, and we get it as quick as we could, we're not, you know, we're looking at a year from now for any of that to be available for West Fork. It takes about a year. We need to look at the effects of having it come up. Doing the ordinances and the public meetings and so on. And so, so it's not a, it's not a quick thing to do. But the idea behind the one and a half cent sales tax is to take a half cent of that in support of police and fire. And they, they are short, they have been for a long time. A lot of times, they struggle just, just to be equipped, to maintain vehicles, and to make sure that they, they have the personnel to do the jobs that they need. Um, and, you know, there's, there's, there's not any other sources besides our sales tax and art breaker, but there's not for any of the departments, it's true across the board. But that, if, so I would like to start that part of the discussion, that, that a half cent would not have a sunset. That would be a support with those two departments continuing. Then the other one cent, which has come up before, would be divided among departments in the city depending on needs. One of the first things we have right here is, we've, we've been talking for a little over a year about an addition to the library. And it needs, the building needs some major work. We need to get the stacks out of the old part of the building. And they do need some expansion, they need some more computers. It just, it just needs more room. And they're maintaining, I think, to flow people through there so that they choose to walk. They're using, they're doing programs with schools and with children, so there's, there's a lot of activity there. Then we have, we have considerations for infrastructure repair. We're, we're looking at the funding that we probably have available, at least in the near future, for the sewer, but we have similar major problems with our water system. And there hasn't been much great interruptions, so we're gonna be looking at some very strong funding there to work on that. Our water system is gonna be evaluated in the next few weeks. Rural Water Association is gonna help us. So we'll be able to identify some of the major problems we have with our system. You know, we, we always seem to struggle with vehicles come up, and now we're gonna do that. So, you know, we'll be using vehicles for, for departments. Maintenance on buildings, we've fallen behind on it. You know, all of our facilities need something, some of them kind of major. Some of them are still in okay shape, but they still need attention before they become bad shape. And, you know, the economic development part of it is gonna be a slow process as well. Whatever efforts we put forward toward that, it's, that will also be a slow process. We're not gonna have a large increase in sales tax in a short period of time. So this, this is not really a band-aid. This is, this is something I think that could really help the city in lots of respects. We have, I, I think probably maybe all of one of our departments, or two of our departments are pretty well staffed, but we could use another police officer. Occasionally, it comes up that we, we really need twenty-four hour coverage. I think businesses might in some respect, you know, expect some of that, and also businesses coming in. So there's just a lot on the table there that I think would justify us looking at this series. And so that's what I would like for the council to. We could get some discussion tonight, or we can have a workshop sometime in the next few weeks to get together and look at this more closely. What do you expect, you expect a cent and a half to bring in?
Um, a cent right now is bringing in right at two hundred thousand, a little more than that maybe. I think, you know, we, the library is in the restraints, and now their funding has been cut back across the whole state. I mean, I know that we've worked on their ankles grants and all that, and it's kind of not worked out. But the library, we need to address that somehow. Because it's, I mean, I know there's kids that go down there after school and is waiting for their parents to pick them up. I know that's kind of, but they hang out down there, read books, and it also gives them somewhere to go after school. So it would be nice to have a nice little library.
I know we need money, and I know that there are departments that are very short. But if we do this, we're looking at probably one of the highest rates in northwest Arkansas, maybe the state.
Four or two.
But it's well over eleven percent, and that's pretty tough. We've just increased water. I'm just throwing out my thoughts, we've increased it. I mean, the thing, the good thing about it is if we do it, ultimately the voters will decide on it. But I just think that that's, you know, we've asked for the rates, water rates three times, or will be three times. Now we're gonna do the cent and a half here, and it begins to be a lot of money for people.
At a time when people don't have a lot of money.
Just my thoughts. I'm not calling it the people deciding, because that's where it all comes in.
Yeah, sure.
And we set like the something like the score on the village or something, if you want to talk about it.
Yes. And it, and I, I put it at a cent and a half, looking at the half cent for our employees. And, you know, it doesn't have to be. I think one thing we need to consider if we're gonna do this is probably gonna be a one-time shot. So do we, should we set workshop? Gets more information in?
I'd like to see the workshop, and put some together somewhere. Or we got some numbers to look at. And make a education, stay at this rather than throwing money. And the other thing I would like to express is, I have a real problem with pouring any more money into the old library building. I think if we're gonna do something like this, we need to build a new building. It'd scare people to death to know how much money is actually in that building that's down here. I went to city council when we bought the building and went through two renovations on it that cost a lot of money. And actually, I think your department paid for most of it. Always easy to look back, and we don't really have anything to show for all that. We should have done that in the first place.
Yes, yeah.
Wouldn't be in this position. One remodel was over a hundred thousand, and another was additions and stuff was thirty-five forty thousand. But it has a lot of money in that little building, and it still has bad deficiencies. And rather than throwing more money at it, I would like to see it inserted, effort put together to, everybody working together to get us a new, you know, commercial building, metal building or whatever, and put it right there next to it. And use it to keep the record tent or something, you know. But I, I think we need to look at it.
All right, well, I'll set, I'll set a date for a workshop. And we'll have a Saturday evening to look at it, we'll gather in the next month. So put your thoughts on paper too, if you would, if there's anything that you want. You could, you could send, you could send questions and ideas to, to myself or to Christie. And then we can get those out for everybody to look at before we have that workshop. All right. Budget adjustment, item number three, seven thousand dollars from streets to police. And what the, the police department has, has been cast their equipment budget. And so some of the things that have come up is, we've had, we've had, I think, one stop that the officer needed a kit to test for marijuana or cocaine or crack, wanted to, didn't have that with him. And so we've got to look at all the vehicles, none of them had any of those kits. So, you know, those are, that, that seems like a minor thing, but when you're out of control and you're, you're making stops and that comes up, you know, a car needs to have, you know, the necessary equipment to, to take care of a stop. One of the things that they just did along those lines is they put in compression bandages and turtlenecks in all the cars if that were needed in the next day. And so, you know, for the next six months, pardon, let's see, Christie, this will go, part of this will go to. All right, right now, under, and I think I, I think I put that sheet in front of you. Do you guys have a statement of revenue expenditures?
This is the email you guys have to give, probably? No.
And the resolution, was he, both of them were? Well, under equipment, right now they're at thirty-two hundred dollars in the rev. And so of that seven thousand, thirty-three of that, we just bring that equipment back up. And then. And then supply, a supply item was added to that for thirty-seven hundred dollars. So really what that seven thousand would do is bring your budget back into the black, the key. And allow them thirty-seven hundred dollars for more expenditures throughout the rest of the year. Which would include small items like example.
Charlie, I'd like to clarify that that it's not street money, so we're not taking restricted funds or anything out of that, out of the street department to give to the police department. This is sales tax money that we had allocated in the budget to give to the street department that with looking at their budget, we can see that they're gonna have. that with looking at their budget, we can see that they're going to have it in abundance because they haven't used a lot of what was budgeted for them. So, we strictly would be taking a sales tax allotment that we had given the street, reducing that by $7,000 and giving that to the police department instead. So, it's not restricted funds that were transferred from the street to the general fund.
So, and there's a resolution for that. Whereas the city of West Fork has probably adopted a budget for the fiscal year of 2015 and whereas it has declared that the city of West Fork has been forced by circumstances to make certain additional expenditures and funds over and above the budget amounts. The following line of items will be adjusted. Street department sales tax revenue will be reduced by $7,000 and the police department's sales tax revenue will be increased by $7,000 to be used for additional equipment supplies required by the department. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of West Fork if these line item adjustments will be adopted, ratified and made part of the budget for 2015. I would entertain a motion to approve that resolution. I can like here. Is there any discussion? All in favor say yes. Okay, item four, we're back to vehicles. The current vehicle that we have that was used by the water, sewer and streets department has been around the block. I think the police had it first, Butch has used it. It's, it's, it works in town, but it's not a vehicle that would go on road trip anywhere, not even to Little Rock or following the horse. I think the furthest that vehicle drives is to, to great, I think, I think it goes, I think it's gone as pretty good a few times for a regional plan. But it's, it's just not something that we can count on as transportation. And so, I'm asking that the council consider us looking at state bid to purchase another vehicle that will be used in the streets department. I'm looking at a pickup truck. I think it would be a more versatile vehicle. As time goes on, that could also go either into police department or go into a new city truck if something else were purchased, but something had to go out of, out of service. So, it would, it would serve, it would serve likely for a longer period of time if we purchased a pickup truck rather than like an SUV. And, you know, we're probably, right now, I think we're looking in the neighborhood of pickup truck, short bed with a, with a crew cab. That's just a little extended cab, not a, not a, not a crew cab, an extended cab. So, that's a smaller area behind it for right around $20,000 plus or minus. I, I got some of that information today offline and I talked with, I talked with the gentleman at the state Arkansas Vehicle Contract Department. One vehicle that they have on there that is a pickup truck with the extended cab, short bed, is on there at $20,193. There's no shivvies, there's no fours and this is at Landers. And that, that is a four by four. So, again, there, we need winter stuff, we need off-road stuff, we would have that vehicle to use. And there has been a couple of times in the past that we've asked the police, the patrolmen, if they have four-wheel drive and we're having bad winter weather coming in, to leave those vehicles here at the city hall so that any officer who came in would have a four-wheel drive vehicle to use during the bad weather times. So, I think we have two in the police department. We have three, okay, then you don't have, you don't have another one. What it, what it kind of truck is a, that's a Dodge. It's a 1500, it's a Dodge Ram 1500.
Dodge, yeah.
Dodge, yeah. We're looking into the block before the next state bid comes out. And you don't know what, whether there's going to be four or shivvies or anything.
I don't know what can I do with the LC.
We'll put it up for, again, we'll put it up.
Give it up.
We've done that before. I think it would have passed maybe two years. We've done that with two vehicles.
Nelson knows the best, what he gave her in that. That one had about 80,000 or 90,000, had the engine, transmission replaced. And then Butch took it and he's done a number of things to it. It's gone.
Because they had a door handle on the driver's side. Usually the window went down.
Well, it's just served a purpose, two, two departments. Where would we get this money?
I get that, but how come we didn't have it in the budget and the vehicle was getting that bad and the news was that bad?
Well, when that budget was made, road trips, that I, that I'm aware of, any time that Butch had to travel out of town, he took his own vehicle and the agencies that he traveled for paid his mileage. And he took, he took a private vehicle.
I think there was, that was, in that budget time would have been when the water department was separate of the city. And I asked Butch a number of times or talked with him about getting a new vehicle and he didn't want to do that with the climate of the city and so forth. And I know that was one of the reasons that he never, that he never asked for a new vehicle, so.
I mean, do we perceive a lot of road trips between like now, January?
Well, there, I'm, I don't know. I'm going to guess, I haven't, I haven't been involved in that much in that side of it, but, you know, I think he could probably make a trip a month or two trips a month. And part of that will depend upon if the new director takes, takes on some of the same kinds of activities that we had before with the agencies. Rural Water Association, we've been on their board. So, they, they, usually when they have a meeting or even if it's just with a single entity, a single city, we travel to a block, they don't travel to here. We've done, we've done that three times already since I've been here, just with EDQ.
Where would we probably try to get this money from?
All right. This would come half out of streets and half out of water and sewer. And because it's, the job is split mainly between those two. And that's going to be, you know, half and half. Christie, can you explain a little bit on, streets is sidewalk, is that right? The part that comes out of streets?
Um, we, there was, before we took the $7,000 away from the streets just now to get the police, there was about $27,000 that I could basically shave off of many different line items without even touching this paving line item, which is at $45,000 that we haven't touched yet this year. So, the streets has an abundance right now and a lot of that's just, Butch did that budget so I can't speak for why that budget was where it is or why we haven't spent money that was budgeted or whatever. But it's gotten a bunch of money in those line items right now. So, there, there was $20,000 that I could easily find without touching the paving and sidewalks line item at all. And then the water department for their $10,000, we'll have to take it out of their savings. And I say that I haven't looked at their line items real close to see if there's a line item so you can shame on, but I think there's a little over $5,000 in the water savings right now. But I think it's important for those two departments to share that vehicle because that's been employed best, both equally works for both of those departments.
Sounds like that budget could be a little bit.
Might be a good thing, yeah.
I'll make a motion to purchase it.
The money's there.
One second. Any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Post my like sign. Okay, tonight's Monday night, sorry. All right. Number five, maintenance of city administration building. What we have going on in this building right now is we have, we have water infiltration coming in and we had, we had water in this room coming down this wall slash set of range we had. We've got stucco, that's about the brick area that has released from the brick that we're going to have to get out of there. That's a cause of moisture infiltration, getting behind that stucco. We have brick deterioration on the outside of this wall on the door that is affecting the mortar. And we have some brick faces popping up everywhere when there's freezing. That water gets in the brick, pops the faces off. So, we need, we need repairs on this roof, which is, there's a, there's a wall that extends above the roof. So, a lot of that infiltration that has been causing water coming in this building and the damage to the brick on the outside is going underneath the cap on that extended wall called a parapet. Water coming in the top of that cap and going down between the brick. And then it just filters out into the brick and then in this case it keeps all the way inside and out. So, that flashing is going to have to be replaced and resealed. And then the other part of that is this roof that we have right here above us slopes back into the main roof of the building. It should never have been put on that way, but it was. So, all of the rain that comes off the police station or off of this part of the building goes back into a small area and then comes out on trade on the side. There are, there are some holes in that metal up there already. And once that starts, it's going to continue to go through. So, at some point, probably in the near future, there's going to be water that's going to get down through that roof into this building. We've got an air conditioner on top of here that continually go up and with air leaks around it, so we're going to pull that air conditioner off of it with the rest of our units out in Parkville line here. Get it off of there. So, what we have, what we're looking at is the roof, to put a new roof above us here to get the water drain off of course and into the Parkville area and get it draining onto the existing roof, which is now. And to, and to put the flashing over the parapet all the way around to seal that off. And to, to blast the brick, get rid of deteriorated mortar and re-strike all those joints and put a sealer on it. We're looking at for the roof part of it, $16,622 and for the brick, $4,500. Christie?
We, we need to do that in two jobs. You need to do your roof as one job and your brick as another job because you're over the state bid limit with your $21,000. So, yes, we can do a budget adjustment, but let's do two different motions and don't enter into one contract or all that work at one time.
Right. Does that make sense?
I agree. The council should consider that it's two different. Decide which one they want to do as a higher priority right now in case you can't do both. And then vote on that one and then go to the next one. You think it's lower priority. And then instruct the mayor to work with the contractor on those two projects.
The water infiltration is the biggest problem. That's, that's what we're looking at, $16,622.
The last time we had worked on this was what, maybe three years ago? No, it's been longer than that. It's been only like five years ago and they put it in a whole new layer across the roof. But we were told at that time that wouldn't solve all the problems of the pitch. It was a big part of the problem that where the police department makes this building that that pitch was a big problem and all that. So, we fixed a large part of the issue with the layer that they put on there. And I don't, that's a special coating and I'm not exactly sure what a word I would use. That was $18,000. And that fixed the majority of our leaks. It was a band-aid for, for part of it. It didn't completely fix all the others.
Our main roof out here, the metal on the main roof out here, that probably there, we're okay with that. It's this part up here. If you get up there to look at it, this roof valleys out the middle plus it flows onto the existing roof here.
Charlie, this roof like this is like that old garage was over there. That stem wall sticks up there, that roof runs out there like that and that's tar paper. Somebody walks up the edge, look over the side, they walk through the roof. And I think that you're talking about back here has been added on is the reason it slopes that way. I think there was an alley through there.
There was, yeah, there was an alley, right.
I believe I remember that. But if anybody gets up on these roofs, kids crawl up or anything, you're fixing leaks. And I don't know how you would change that because that's just tar paper and then tar it over the whole mess. And it probably runs up almost to the top of that and then just comes down. And then the water's got to run on that part of that that doesn't have any support. It's not a very good idea.
No, and that's one of the things that, that they're going to fix on this. They're going to run metal up the side and then they're going to counterflash that from the top coming down over that metal. So, it's similar to what they would do around a fireplace, a chimp. So, it's a flashing and then a counterflashing and then they're sealing that with sealers as well. So, it'll be a good job and when we talked about it, I told them that we were interested in something that would last 20 years, 25 years rather than five or 10 years. And I, that's what we're going to get. If we, if we go, if we go with this bid here, that's what we're going to get. We're going to get a long-lasting repair to this roof.
How long when?
We talked 20 to 25 years without, without any vision. They'll come back, they'll come back within the first year, go up, look at everything, see what the heat and the cold has affected the sealer joint that, that are sealing those, those metal sheets together and then repair those to see what happens with, with that concern. It's summertime to get tremendous now, winter time, cold temperatures. So, things will move, caulkings even the best will displace. But, you know, those kinds of repairs and turnbacks we won't pay for. He will come. Stay out there. What kind of warranty? Uh.
But when he did the, one that's up there, it was five years, I don't know if that's still.
Oh, he did that?
He did the, he did the lighter area. And it was a five-year warranty, but I don't know if that's the same as.
One of the big things that needs done is take the flagpole off the roof and put it into where there's no excuse for anybody to be up there.
They're gone. They're gone. We took them off today. We took them off today. Yeah, our city crew does not like to get up there. Jeffrey will be that or better, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to call him. But he has done very well to stand behind what he did for us. Do you have an expectation on that?
No, five years sounds pretty good to me. Jeffrey's just kinda curious as to what kind of warranty he had.
So, should we table it until we find that information out, or?
Something like that's kinda hard to, there's a lot of variables that can change and stuff as far as warranty goes, as far as what happens to the roof.
Yeah.
Discovered.
Yes.
And that happens to, you're really.
He's a local guy in the area, so we know where he lives. Do you, do you want, do you want to table this? Do you want to pass it with, with attachment that we're expecting a certain period of warranty with this? I, I can't imagine that he would do anything less than five years for what he did up here.
Yeah.
And. Am I gonna call, you wanna call, right now? I'll be late.
I would for that kinda thing.
But you know, they may be, something dealt now to do that firm deal up there, because there's many different ways to do it. And that would solve the major problem.
Counsel, resist. Counsel, resist.
He doesn't remember what that was.
He's very weird.
I hear warranty.
Oh, recess, one way, I'll change, but no, just.
But we're not doing those.
All right, will we adjourn? We were adjourned, we were.
We're unresessed.
We're recessed.
We're unresessed. I'm spooked, you're, I should know about recess. All right, so, five years on installation, twenty years on materials. So, I would entertain a motion. Yes, Steve? Is there a second?
A second, yes.
Don, second. Is there any more discussion?
This is for the roof?
This is for the parapet.
The sixteen thousand.
Yeah. And, yeah, and we do the roof surface work is up here.
The, we're just, let me come down and, all right, we're.
General reserves.
General.
These are those. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Close my last sign. Okay, and then, the brick repair, which is removing the mortar, re-striking all of that, and putting a sealer on it that is tinted to the same color as our paint, so it'll stand out. At some point, we're gonna repaint the building, so set any attempt to seal it to match fairly closely. And that's forty-five hundred dollars. So. Again, for a motion? Second? Here, any discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Close my last sign. Before we adjourn, let me, let me ask you this of the council. I understand the questions about the salary on the new position. And I understand the concerns on that. Have, have I not given you guys enough information prior to, prior to, in this case, prior to the application process and the interviews? That you would have known what these costs were? And if I'm not giving you guys enough information, I need to, I need to know that. Because I, I don't, I don't wanna come into meetings without you guys being prepared. I absolutely don't want that. It's not fair to you, it's not fair to this town.
I think that I'm.
I really need, I, I really need for you guys to be informed, so that I know what you want. You're representing the town, and you're representing the money in this town. That's, that's your job, and I absolutely respect it.
Well, one thing, he has never done this job whatsoever, and he's hired of higher scale than the very bottom. You know, it was fifty-five to sixty-five, what brought it up to fifty-eight? Because he, he has not done this job.
But he's done elements of it that, that required some, some years in those positions. His, his job experience with Emily Cruz, he's, he's even been in industries where there was, where there was union workers and company administrators, which is not an easy thing to manage. And so, there's an experience with managing people that, that takes years of experience to do. He has worked with water purification and with wastewater, not on the sewage side, but on chemical side. So, there's a lot of transfer and translation there that goes into it. Probably the one thing in this job that he doesn't know much about is asphalt and concrete. But most of what we do, you know, that's something that can be learned. We have people in place that really over the years have, they've been the ones doing that in the field. Without supervision, but he, you know, he would definitely become a part of that. He is excellent with budgets. He has done every job basically that he's had in industry. He's had a budget that he's had put together and he, so that's a good part of the job. There's three kind of strong things that he has.
The only problem I have with it is, I don't think you, I don't think that we probably were precise enough on our, what we wanted you to front pay. We gave you the ten thousand dollar. You could go from fifty-five to sixty-five, and probably, I'm looking back, that's probably near on our part. I think we need to bring, be more concise on what we are looking for. But, I don't have a problem with it, Mayor, except, you know, I'm looking here, under old business, which was, the positions closed, the committees reviewing applications and interviewing possible candidates. And then the next thing is that we're, we've offered and the man's accepted the job. I don't, I wish there was a step in there that we could know these things. Because if, and the attorneys made it very clear that you're doing what you're allowed to do, and the only thing we could do, if we wanted to, is come back and say, no, we're only gonna pay you this much. And that becomes a real, that's not a good situation when we have to, if we tell a guy he's only fifty-five after you hired him at fifty-eight or something. So, I wish there was some step in there that we could do. But we might agree on this before the man is officially offered a position, whoever, in whatever position. That's only part of it. You know, I, I like James, and I think there might be a few more things going on that he might present later with what he might do, and I think he probably gonna do a good job of it.
Yeah, I'm not questioning James or questioning the committee, because that's, I didn't, I didn't wanna have anything to do with that. I want the committee to do it and make a recommendation, and I'll afford it, but I'm, I'm kinda like my heart. I think that somehow there needs to be another step in there where, you know, you come to us and say, this is what, you know, I wanna offer.
It, it just doesn't give us a place to say that we don't, we, we don't agree with you and make somebody not look very good. I don't, I wouldn't wanna do that to a candidate, first of all. He's accepted the job, and then the tenant made a mistake, three thousand less or something, you know? And if we could have some step in there just to say, this is what I'd like to offer him, he's accepted, depending upon what you agree on salary. If, and we may not have another one of these now for some time, hopefully we won't. That's my, I.
Yes.
I'm comfortable with the job you did, and you certainly, I mean, you're closer to the lower level than you are the higher level, and what we hate, so if, it's nobody, not your fault that he was offering what he was, so. Back to my thinking, we can be more precise, and we can sure if we have to do this, and make sure that we're somehow involved in that some way.
Chief, maybe it'd be really, I wanna be totally clear on the council's role in the appointment and removal of department heads. You all made this department, so the person running it, you've also done a, you did an organizational charge, you made a person department head. That invokes a law, a state law that makes the mayor responsible for the appointment and removal of the department head. So, the mayor is responsible for hiring them, disbanding them, removing them. But both of those, the hire and the termination are subject to a two-thirds override by y'all. So, the mayor asked you for an affirmative vote, and I think that's very nice, you know, especially for the new hire. But really what you have is a negative vote. You could have said, no, Mayor, we don't, we don't want that guy, and we don't want him at that price. So, two-thirds of us are gonna override you. You get a hiring and a termination, just wanted to make sure that I was giving you all the, because that's a significant power, Chief, and I wanted to make sure y'all knew about that. Oh, yeah. Well, like I was kinda what you're saying, he don't want the mayor to come in and hire him at one price, and then us come back and say, no, we don't like that. We're trying to cut out the mayor's cost.
More from a clarification standpoint, I mean. So, in, in general, I'm supplying with you guys with what you need.
I have my own council meeting.
Yeah. All right. We're not gonna hire anybody else. Hopefully we're done with it. Well, counsel, thank you, we, this was, this was a big endeavor, but hopefully we won't spend any more money until we're, just seeing many years. And so, thank you for, thank for this. Somebody adjourned this meeting, please, please. Mr. You got them all tonight?
Your second.